Deacon Clint Brown with Saint Mark's Episcopal Church. Deacon, hi, how are you? Please come forward. Everyone who so choose, please stand with me and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
We celebrate this week Thanksgiving. It was always good to be thankful no matter the challenges that we face and it drives us to appreciate what's basic in life. So I ask you to join me in this litany of Thanksgiving, your response will be we thank you, Lord. For the beauty and wonder of your creation in earth and sky and sea.
We thank you, Lord.
For all that is gracious in the lives of men and women revealing the image of Christ.
We thank you, Lord.
For our daily food and drink, our homes and families and our friends.
We thank you, Lord.
For minds to think and hearts to love and hands to serve.
We thank you, Lord.
For health and strength to work and leisure to rest and play.
We thank you, Lord.
For the brave and courageous who are patient in suffering and faithful in adversity.
We thank you, Lord.
For all valiant seekers after truth, liberty and justice.
We thank you, Lord.
For the communion of saints in all times and places.
We thank you, Lord.
Above all, we give you thanks for the great mercies and promises given to us in Christ Jesus, our Lord. To him be praise and glory with you, O Father, and the Holy Spirit now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Deacon. Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, Deacon. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Ames here. Mayor Protem Felshaw absent, Councilmember Getz?
Present.
Councilmember Neal?
Present.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Samuel? And Councilmember Muton. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You've probably heard, but Councilman Mayor Protem Felshaw will not be joining us today. Unfortunately, he has tested positive for COVID-19, so he is quarantined. But I'm sure he's watching. We do have one proclamation today that I would like to deliver. Whereas the 22Q 11.2 deletion syndrome is a small amount of genetic material missing termed microdeletion on the long arm of chromosome 22 that causes many physical changes to the body such as the formation of distinct facial features and that can lead to heart, bone, and immune system disorders among other complications. 22Q 11.2 has evolved from former names like de-charge syndrome, barrelocardiofacial syndrome, VCF-S, Sfrentson syndrome, conaltracheal, I'm sorry if I say that wrong, anomaly face syndrome, CTAF, Sidilakova syndrome, catch 22 syndrome. And whereas symptoms of 22Q 11.2 are not the same for everyone and may include cleft palate, heart problems, learning and communication difficulties, mental health conditions, poor eyesight, mental ear infections, seizures resulting from low levels of parathyroid hormone, other indoctrination issues, low resistance to infection, weak muscles, sclerosis, and low calcium levels with these among over 180 anomalies associated with 22Q 11.2 deletion syndrome. And whereas 22Q 11.2 is a genetic condition usually not inherited but can be inherited in approximately 10 to 15% of cases. It is the result of a spontaneous mutation in some 80 to 90% of cases that people are born with and has potential to affect almost every system in the body and cause a wide range of health problems and intellectual disabilities. And whereas while 22Q 11.2 is known to affect approximately one in every 2,000 live births, one in 68 children with congenital heart disease, CHD, and five to eight born with cleft palate, this estimate may be low because of, because not every person with 22Q 11.2 displays significant symptoms and may never be diagnosed. And whereas 22Q 11.2 can be diagnosed based on a physical exam and the presence of standard symptoms, a blood test called FISH, F-I-S-H, prolecent insitu hybridization can be done in more detailed genetic tests. These tests are rare but possible because they require much more sophisticated laboratory techniques. And whereas physical problems caused by 22Q 11.2 are treated by dealing with symptoms such as heart defects or treated surgically and cleft palates can often be corrected surgically. Children with low calcium or PTH levels can take supplements. And whereas 22Q 11.2 has no cure, many therapies and medical inventions are available to help associated symptoms including counseling, physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, along with many other needed therapies should begin early in life to assess developmental problems and manage learning delays. Now therefore, I Becky Ames, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, hereby proclaim November 22nd, 2020 and November 2020 as 22Q 11.2 Awareness Day, 2020Q 11.2 Awareness Month in the City of Beaumont to raise awareness of this genetic condition. Accordingly, I have set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed on today, November 24th, 2020. And we're pleased to have Twana Wilson, CEO of Abilities Above Bounds Beyond. And I believe I read somewhere that maybe her son will be with her, yes. And we welcome you, please. And if you would like to come forward and receive your proclamation, we will allow you to say a few words if you would like. Yes, ma'am, thank you. I'm sorry. There you go. Twana, if you'd like to come up, please, and you can bump everybody if you'd like or wave and accept your proclamation, that would be great.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you.
What's my face?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Twana Wilson. I am the CEO and co-founder of Abilities Above Bounds Beyond LLC, a newly established company that's beginning its work within the Beaumont community. And we like to thank the City of Beaumont for backing us in our first initiative of raising awareness for 22Q. It's a really big deal. It's a really big deal and we are so appreciative of that. In the spring, we will be planning our first 22Q awareness event. And this is very important in the month of November because it's raising awareness not just for the kiddos and the individuals who have 22Q, but also for their families. This is my son. He has 22Q and he is 16 years old. In this area, I've only found two others that have 22Q. I'm sure there are other individuals. But I have waited for a long time to meet several people in this area. And about three years ago, I finally started meeting some people. But I ended up having to drive out to Houston to meet those families and they were located here in southeast Texas. So I thought this would be a perfect opportunity to have something in our area. I'm a parent of 22Q, I'm a parent of child with autism, a speech delay, and I'm an advocate for kiddos and individuals that have special needs. This is very, very appreciative of me, very appreciative of my son. As you see, he has his technology and everything. But he and I have worked on a project during the pandemic to work on writing his book. He's been through several surgeries. Three on his heart, two on his knee. And it's been a long journey. They said that he would never walk or talk or do lots of things. But his father and I and our family, we have pushed. This community has helped us push. My son as well, other kiddos in this area. And so this is very, this is great. Thank y'all so much. And he would also like to say something as well.
I have tied to you. What's my face? Thank you. Thank you for my man, where's?
Very good.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate y'all coming today, Ms. Wilson, and anything we can do to help you, please don't hesitate. So glad to do this proclamation to raise awareness for you.
Thank you so much. And I wouldn't be right if I did not recognize 22Q Texas, VCF-S Texas, Inc., as well as the 22Q Foundation, the International Foundation as well. They thank you as well.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate y'all.
Ms. Wilson.
That does conclude our proclamations today. So now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to speak on scheduled agenda items six through 11, excuse me, or the consent agenda, the time to do so is now. Items one through five have already been heard in a public hearing or still are not available for comment. But if you would like to speak on six through 11 or the consent agenda and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room and hand it to the city clerk, she will call out your name. We would appreciate if you would keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up. If you're here to speak on any other item, I will open up the microphone at the end of our general business for that purpose. But right now, it's for the consent agenda or items six through 11. Okay. There appears to be no one, so council, I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda, please.
So move to approve.
There's a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. First item, please.
Mayor and council, item number one is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 28 of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas, and in particular, the boundaries of the zoning districts as indicated upon the zoning map of Beaumont, Texas, by changing the zoning of property presently zoned RMH, residential, multiple-family dwelling, highest-density district to NC Neighborhood Commercial District for property located on the south side of Delaware Street and 120 feet west of East Tex Freeway, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing a penalty. Jeremy Mitchell of South Tex Incorporated has requested the rezoning. The property owner would like to develop a convenience store at this location at a joint public hearing held on November the 16th. The planning commission recommended six to zero to approve the request. The administration recommends approval as well.
Thank you, council. You have heard the reading of item number one. Can I have a motion on this item first, please?
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Is there any discussion or questions? Okay. There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Second item, please.
Item number two is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a funeral home in a GCMD, general commercial, multiple-family dwelling district for property located at 2315 South 11th Street, the City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. A joint public hearing held on November the 16th, the planning commission recommended six to zero to approve the request with the two conditions that are stated in your staff memorandum. The administration recommends approval with the same two conditions.
Thank you, council. You've heard the reading of item number two. Is there a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
Thank you, and I assume that's with the conditions, that's right? Thank you. Second. There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval with the two conditions. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Number three, please.
Mayor and council, item number three is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow an elementary and secondary school in a GCMD, general commercial, multiple-family dwelling district for property located at 2615 Broadway Street, the City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Acton Academy Beaumont is requesting the specific use permit. At a joint public hearing held on November the 16th, the planning commission recommended six to zero to approve the request with the following condition. Construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's pre-treatment and/or fats, oils, and grease program as well as all applicable building and fire codes. We recommend approval with the same one condition.
Thank you, council. You've heard the reading of number three. Is there a motion on this item, please?
Move to approve.
Thank you, with the condition, I assume?
With the condition.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion? Yes?
Mayor, I signed an affidavit to abstain from this item.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion, questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries with one abstention. Item number four, please.
Item number four is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a gaming facility in a GCMD, general commercial, multiple-family dwelling district for property located at 1475 Washington Boulevard, the City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The applicant requested a specific use permit to allow a gaming facility with 35 machines. The hours of operation for the business would be from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. every day. It says, and security will be provided by onsite surveillance. The joint public hearing held on November the 16th, the planning commission recommended six to zero to deny the request for a specific use permit. The administration recommends denial as well.
Thank you, council. You have heard the reading of number four. Is there a motion on this item? Some.
I'm so moved for denial.
Thank you. Would you like to second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor of denial, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously for denial. Number five, please.
Mayor and council, item number five is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance vacating and abandoning an approximate 70-foot by 300-foot and 60-foot by 300-foot right-of-way located at Main and Pearl Street, City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The Beaumont Police Department has requested the closure. At a joint public hearing held on November the 16th, the planning commission recommended six to zero to approve the request. The administration recommends approval as well.
Thank you, council. You have heard the reading of number five. Is there a motion on this item? Some. There's a motion? Is, there's a motion and a second on the floor for approval? Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Number six, please.
Item number six is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 20, Section 20.03.004 of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas, by restructuring the school zones, speed limit list, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing a penalty. Our staff received a request to change the school zone times from the Beaumont Independent School District. And due to COVID-19, BISD, as you know, the school times have been modified from last year to accommodate on-campus and virtual learning. So that's the reason behind the request. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council. You've heard the reading of number six. Is there a motion on this item?
Some move to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion or questions? There being none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Number seven, please.
Mayor and council, item number seven is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for funding from the Texas Department of Transportation and execute an agreement with TechDOT if the funding is approved. TechDOT issued what is known as a call for projects in September of this year for communities to apply for, again, what is called off-system project funding assistance through their Highway Safety Improvements Program. The intended purpose of the program is to improve the safety of accident-prone areas. City staff submitted the proposed projects that are listed in the staff memorandum. And according to local TechDOT representatives, the City of Beaumont was the only entity to submit any projects in the Beaumont District. And they asked if we had additional projects that could be considered. And they gave us a week extension to submit those. So our staff added additional proposed locations to install what are known as adaptive traffic signals. And the total of all submitted projects is $1,890,581. And the program requires a local match of 10% over the course of three years. So again, you can see in the memorandum where the projects are listed, anticipated let date, you know, for Dallin Road in fiscal year 2022, others in fiscal year 2023, and then 2024. And the 10% match would be paid for out of the capital program. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council. You've heard the reading of number seven. Is there a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Councilman Getz.
Mr. Manager, would you explain for the public's benefit what adaptive traffic signal programs entail?
We got one of you would ask that. Mark could answer better than I can.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Basically, adaptive signaling puts additional cameras at the intersection, but also cameras that look further back than right at the stop bar, which would be your traditional ground stop loop type interrupt to see if there's traffic. And what it does is it forecasts how much traffic is coming to the intersection. It also, you deploy it in a corridor. And the only corridor we have in Beaumont today is on College from Dallin to Hospital Drive. So each of those intersections has adaptive signaling today. So each intersection will look at the intersection, it will look further back, probably about 100, 150 yards back to see what traffic's coming. And it communicates to the other intersections that are in a row. So it's predicting not just what's at that intersection, but it's predicting two and three intersections back. It can adjust for about a 30 to 40% traffic increase and be able to adjust the lights to allow that to flow through. We did a study on College when we put it in and we got a 37% improvement in traffic flow down College after the implementation of adaptive signaling. So what we hope by doing this is that we can get better adjustment for traffic conditions. Particularly excited about Dallin Road because we get differing traffic at lunchtime and on holidays due to shopping. And we'll be able to move traffic through those lights better than we can today.
Sounds great. What are the chances, do you think, for us to?
We're pretty excited about it because we were the only ones to submit the first time around. So we're really hoping that we get approval on it.
Very good.
So 90, 90, 10 split, that's great.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion or questions? Appearing to be none, there is a motion and a second on the floor for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Number eight, please.
Mayor and council, item number eight is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with CDM Smith Incorporated to continue management of the municipal separate storm sewer system permit for the City of Beaumont for fiscal year 2021. The manager of the permit conducts dry and wet weather screenings at our five major outfalls in the city. And under the permit, the city is required to submit an annual report summarizing the activities and results of the screenings and other inspections conducted throughout the year. This year's services include implementation of the new storm water management plan. And that details how the city will comply with the new permit. If approved, the total services and expenses shall not exceed $250,000 without the city's prior written authorization. We've been using this firm for now eight years, we're very pleased with them. Funds were budgeted in the general fund, the administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council. You have heard the reading of item number eight. Is there a motion on this item, please?
Move to approve.
There's a motion for approval, is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval, is there any discussion or questions? There appearing to be none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Item number nine is to consider a resolution approving the purchase of two automatic chlorine injector systems from Moody Brothers Incorporated of Houston for use at the Loeb Water Production Plant. The Loeb Water Production Plant uses manually adjusted chlorine gas injector systems to treat and disinfect water. The current injector systems were damaged by Hurricane Harvey. A new system will allow the chlorine injection process to be automated while allowing operators to make manual adjustments if needed. The cost to replace this equipment, including the booster pumps and a two-year maintenance plan, is a little over $191,000. Part of the cost will be paid for from an insurance reimbursement and the remainder, $90,000 from the water fund. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council. You've heard the reading of number nine. Is there a motion on this item?
Some move to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second? Second. There's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Councilman Getz.
Mr. Manager, are we using the wells in Horden County to provide water to the City of Beaumont at this time?
Not at this time.
Do we expect to do it in the future?
Yes.
When do we expect to roll that back into the system?
When we get these back up.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Number 10, please.
Mayor and council, item number 10 is to consider a resolution approving a contract with Marsh Waterproofing Incorporated of Vider for the water remediation of the east wall and organ repairs at the Jefferson Theater. Jefferson Theater sustained a lot of water damage to the east side, organ chamber and the east vestibule exit during Hurricane Harvey. Bids were solicited from 12 companies for furnishing all labor, materials, equipment, supplies necessary to perform water remediation again on the east wall and repair the organ components in the east and west chambers, including any repairs to the organ itself. One bid was received from Marsh Waterproofing, again, of Vider. Staff recommends approval of the base bid as well as the three alternate bids for a total cost of $255,519. And you can see in the staff memorandum, there's a breakdown. We're receiving some FEMA funding. We're receiving some FEMA funding, grant funding from the Texas Historical Commission. The Jefferson Theater Preservation Society donated funds for the organ repairs a couple of years ago. And that remainder, a little over fifty-six thousand dollars, would be paid for out of the Capital Reserve Fund. And I'd like to thank Keith Folsom and his staff. And they've been working on this for quite some time. There's a lot, a lot of detailed work and, you know, applications and a lot of patience involved, and I appreciate he and his staff's effort. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Council, you have heard the reading of number ten. Is there a motion on this item, please?
Moved to approve.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second for approval. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay, Councilmember Neeld and then Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, Marsh Waterproofing is a very good company and very capable of doing this job. My question is, who's going to be doing the organ repairs?
I believe, well... You know, organ, if you go over there and look at it, a lot of the piping, the piping's in the walls and a part of it, so... But I'll... Go, Keith.
How's it doing?
Good, thank you.
Tom Helms is going to be the one, and he's very experienced at repairing organs, especially of that type. And he's out of, I think, Pensacola, Florida. And he has, he has on his own come down and inspected the organ, actually played the organ. About half of it will play at this point, so that's good news. But the east chamber basically is out of service, and that received the most damage.
Thank you.
So he'll be like a sub for this company? Is that how that works?
Yes, he'll be a sub under Marsh Waterproofing.
Thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Getz. Go ahead. Was it for Keith?
Actually, Councilmember Neeld asked one of the questions that I wanted to say. But I also want to extend my appreciation and thanks for working so hard to coordinate all of these grant requests. I've been following this project, as you know, for some time, and I've been over there and looked at it. And, you know, yes, we've had damage, and it's been difficult to get all of these requests coordinated and all of these grants coordinated. And it's been a long time in coming. I look forward to the day where the organ is able to light up with sound the Jefferson Theater once more. You know, it's a little before my time, but maybe some people will remember during the fifties and sixties, forties, fifties and sixties, the heyday of the Jefferson Theater when they had the organ club and people would come and they would have Saturday matinees. I think with the staff that we have here now, that might be something that we can look to recreate because those people and those generations that experienced the thrill of that and the Saturday matinees, they're now grandparents or great-grandparents. And I do believe they would bring their grandchildren or great-grandchildren to enjoy some of the Roy Rogers Lone Ranger serials that some of us enjoyed as kids. And, you know, that always was preceded with organ music. And it's just a great thing and a wonderful addition to the Jefferson Theater. So thank you for your work on this.
And I would add, I'd like to add to that is even with the west chamber playing, it really sounded good in there. So I can't imagine when everything gets up, how it would sound.
Very good. Thank you, Keith, so much. Okay, there is a motion and a second on the floor for approval of this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously. And before we go to number eleven, I believe we have a couple of discussion items.
Yes, ma'am. We have, Mayor and Council, two discussion items, and they're both going to be led by Todd Semenow, our chief financial officer.
Thanks. Mayor and Council, as you know, the city landfill operations are regulated by the TCEQ, which requires routine daily work in order to meet state requirements. So when we have equipment that breaks down at the city landfill, sometimes we're able to use what's called an emergency repair, which allows us to suspend competitive bidding and get that equipment repaired as soon as possible to get it back online. And then we come to council as soon as possible to give you an update on the cost of those repairs. But what I'd like to talk to y'all today about is the repairs of three dump trucks that are used at the city landfill. And these repairs would not be considered emergency repairs because we're taking a proactive and planned approach to basically replace the hydraulic systems on all three dump trucks. And so what we'd like to propose is Mustang Cat of Houston would do the repairs as a sole-source vendor with an estimated cost of a hundred and two thousand dollars per truck, which would come with a three-year warranty or a two-thousand-hour warranty. The exact cost would not be known at this time because when you do these type of major repairs on this heavy equipment, there's hidden damages that's sometimes not discovered until the equipment is pulled apart for inspections and repairs. So in the interest of transparency, we wanted to inform you about our plan to begin this work on these trucks and then get back to you afterwards when we have the exact price on those.
Okay.
And with that, are there any questions?
Okay, so today it's not an action item. We'll bring it back after the council discusses today just to make sure that we're on the same page, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. Council, do you have any questions or Mr. Semenow?
For clarification, go ahead and tell them though that you're going to start the process on these trucks. We're not going to ask you to come back and vote on it right now.
Understand.
We're going to go to work done and come back.
Afterwards, right.
The cost, just letting them know may be higher.
Yes, thank you.
I have a question. So we're going to get all three trucks done at one time?
No, we're going to, that's, so we're going to try to plan them in one at a time because the landfill has four dump trucks. We can run the landfill with three. So we want to bring them in one at a time when it's, the timing's best for us. That way, we don't have an unexpected failure of those hydraulic systems and leave it shorthanded. And so the total cost, estimated cost, is about three hundred and six thousand dollars, but we allocated four hundred thousand dollars in the budget.
And how long are these trucks going to be down for?
Jeff, do you have any idea how long? Jeff's our fleet manager with the city.
And they're just down...
Six to, about six to eight weeks per truck. It's actually a rehose and re-harness of the trucks. So they get all new electrical harnesses and all new electrical hoses put in, or excuse me, hydraulic hoses put in.
One at a time?
Yes.
Councilman Getz?
Curious, what does a new dump truck cost?
So a new dump truck, same making model, would be about three hundred and seventy thousand.
For one. For one.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, the second discussion item is the sale of the Confederate statue. So just to give council an update, you know, the Confederate statue was listed with Lone Star Auctioneers, and they received bids between November fifth through the nineteenth. And we were given instructions by council not to award a bid of less than fifty thousand dollars. But when we talked to Lone Star Auctioneers, they highly suggested that we have a starting bid of twenty-five thousand dollars, hoping to encourage more bidders and more activity towards that statue. Unfortunately, we only received one bid, and it was for the twenty-five thousand dollars. And it was from a gentleman, his name's Ron Holmes, out of, I believe, Dallas. And he works with a law firm in that area. So obviously, we wanted to bring that offer to council, which would be on the next agenda item. But I'm here for any questions.
Council? Questions?
Mayor.
Councilmember Pete.
Does the auctioneer have any inkling that anybody else might have an interest and might want to pay more?
We haven't received any indication of that interest.
So this might very well be our only offer. It's not what we would prefer, but it at least covers the cost of what it cost us to take it down.
Right, the cost was around sixteen thousand, and the bid, as it stands now, is twenty-five thousand.
So actually, there's a chance we're going to get a few dollars out of this.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is just the review, so we will move to number eleven, please.
Mayor and Council, item number eleven is to consider a resolution approving the sale of the statue removed from Weiss Park. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Council, you've heard the reading of item number eleven. Is there a motion on this item?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Is there any other discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously for approval. Okay, that does conclude our general business items. Before we move forward, I would like to read that at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with section five-five-one point zero-seven-one of the government code. Elizabeth M. Noble individually and on behalf of all others similarly situated versus City of Beaumont, cause number one colon twenty dash C V dash four hundred and Kendrick Williams versus City of Beaumont at all, cause number A dash two zero four comma five zero eight. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today on any item, now's the time to do so. However, if you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room, hand it to the city clerk. She will call out your name. We would appreciate if you would keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you purchase the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. Addie Allen, ninety-six ninety-five, Grosse, Beaumont, Texas. Ms. Allen? Councilman Getz, are you ready? Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, city manager. And I'm standing before you for two issues. One, the last meeting, Mayor, you did address us being six feet social distancing, and that was marked today. But also with the masks, and I'm still appalled that we have city leaders when there's posted outside of the building and it says by way of the governor saying everybody should wear masks in the building, that that has not been done or is not being done. So with COVID rampant, the citizens and people here, but then I see leaders that don't. And I know maybe there's medical reasons, but then the medical reasons should be addressed coming to the podium as well, and that would be a safety issue. But I'm standing here, and I'll try to talk as fast as a slow Texan would. I was sent a weed abatement notice in May. I was here in May. And after looking at the ordinance, it says that when the city cuts the grass, a date should be attached to the building. It's not happening here. I didn't get a notice, and the dates attached to the building are not there. And I've talked with Ms. Foot, and we've had some conversations. I've sent certified letters, two of them to be exact. I have copies of them, if any of you would like to see it, and I have not been responded to. And, you know, I think that that's incorrect. But bottom line, getting to the core of it, number one, the property at ten sixty Shawana is St. Augustine grass. The property that was, excuse me, that was alluded to being high is mint down the side of the neighbor's house. So I would like to get it resolved, and rather than sending this notice to the Bureau for collection and charging me for interest, I have receipts. And Ms. Foot alludes to, I need to prove up when I cut it. Well, according to the ordinance, you're supposed to show me what dates you had your contractors to cut it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
That's all I have.
Okay, is there any other citizen who wishes to speak? Would you like?
I was just going to say, Ms. Allen, thank you for being here. Ms. Foot just left, but if you could visit with Chris Boone right here, who's over in the division, he'd like to work with you to try to resolve it.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no one else, I'll move to council member comments, and I'll start with you, Councilman Getz.
I just want to say that this past weekend, we had, and I'm not trying to steal your thunder, Councilmember Neeld, but I want to give you compliments for promoting it and for how successful this fly-in was. If you don't know what a fly-in is, which I didn't, but it's where pilots from all around the state, in fact, throughout the country, fly into a destination, and there's camaraderie, and they have their planes there for display. But this particular fly-in, we also had a car show. Councilmember Neeld, I'll brag on you. You donated a lot of Lynx and Budan and gave it away for donations, all of which went to the One Hundred Club. There was a great crowd out there. It was beautiful weather. The kids really enjoyed seeing the cars and the planes, and I think it was a great event. I took the liberty of asking a survey question on social media afterwards about whether or not people would, if available, utilize commercial service out of Beaumont Municipal Airport. And because that's actually something that they're looking at doing. And I was overwhelmed by how many people said absolutely. If commercial service was offered out of Beaumont Municipal Airport to destinations like Dallas, New Orleans, and Austin, they would jump at the opportunity to do that. So maybe in the future, with Chartered Air, we could have something like that. I know that's being looked at, and there's exciting things in the future, I believe, at Beaumont Municipal Airport. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Neeld?
No comment, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman, Councilman Pete.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Bart and Keith and Todd for all the work that they put in on all the things that we discussed. It's nice to know, and Chris, that we're ahead of other cities when we're actually putting in for grants. And they recognize us as taking steps forward proactively to get things done because there are grants out there, and if we don't ask, we won't get it. I read a book one time, said, "Ask and you shall receive." Well, it's always nice when we can get it from the state of Texas or the federal government if they have a grant available that we can use. And we're just fortunate to have folks that go above and beyond. For those of you that like sports, Lamar University is starting basketball season. I know this fall has just been weird around here without having football for Lamar University. They're going to play all those games in the spring. Football starts February the fifteenth. As I said, basketball, the women and the men are playing University of Houston and Texas A&amp;M on the twenty-fifth, day before Thanksgiving. Then we've got our soccer championship, Steve Holloman and his group that won the conference championship. And our good friend Trey Clark, who is the track and field coach out there, who's won, I think, like seventeen cross-country conference championships in a row. I mean, it's really unbelievable. We're just really fortunate. So if you were missing sports in the fall, you're going to get a whole lot of sports in the spring. I do want to tell you that when games are played at Lamar University in the Montane Center, they've gone through all sorts of things in order to follow, you know, the guidelines to make sure that everybody's safe. And as far as social distancing and all the things, they won't let the crowd come out on the court like we've done in the past for obvious reasons. But I think we're in for, needless to say, some really exciting things at Lamar University starting this Wednesday and carrying literally all the way through the end of the spring semester. It's kind of get, we might have to get used to playing football in the spring. But it won't be nearly as hot in February as it has been in September for those of you that come out to the game. as it has been in September, uh, for those of you that, uh, come out to the games. Lastly, this week, we're celebrating Thanksgiving. And, uh, historically, uh, when we put all this in perspective and realize how fortunate we are to live in the United States, uh, when George Washington, he was the first president of the United States and Congress got together in October of seventeen eighty-nine to set aside a day to thank God for all the things that the United States has received, all the blessings. And if you've ever read the proclamation that President Washington wrote, literally, he thanks God almost in every single sentence about bringing all the folks together, uh, and, uh, blessing the United States. So, when we celebrate this, let's think back to when it started. The first one was November twenty-sixth, seventeen eighty-nine. And we eventually, we changed the dates just a little bit till we finally went to the final, the last Thursday and Thanksgiving. Uh, but, uh, we've got so much for which to be thankful. And when we wake up in the morning, we've got, uh, an opportunity to look and take things for granted or take things with gratitude. And we are so fortunate to live in the United States, for America. And for those of you that haven't had the good fortune, uh, to have visited some foreign countries, sometimes you need to step away, take a look and see what we have here compared to what other people live with every single day. And there's literally no comparison. But I wanna wish everybody, uh, Happy Thanksgiving. Uh, and, uh, I'm sure that we'll be thankful that twenty-twenty, you know, everybody says twenty-twenty is, uh, hindsight is all twenty-twenty. Well, I think we all look forward to seeing twenty-twenty in our hindsight, uh, so we can start with twenty-twenty-one. That'd be one more thing for which we can be thankful. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, um, Samuel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to also, uh, congratulate, uh, Councilman Neil. Uh, thank you for all the efforts that you put into the fly-in. Um, that was my first fly-in, uh, experience. Um, I did go out and, um, uh, it's amazing, uh, the look that was at our airport. It looked like an airport. There were people everywhere, uh, people smiling, there were planes coming in, planes going out. And, uh, I, I'd also like to, uh, congratulate Chris, Chris Moe, on the job that was done and all of those that assisted in that project. Because I do know for, for a fact that, um, that allowed some dreams, uh, to become reality. It allowed some to understand that, uh, the only limits we have are those limits within our minds. There were, uh, uh, there's a story that Chris, uh, has, uh, being a local boy from, uh, the north end of Beaumont who passed by an airport quite often, wishing and dreaming that he could fly a plane and he never thought he would be able to do it. And now he's the manager at the airport. He owns his own plane. And there are many others, uh, ordinary folks, just like Taylor Neal, uh, that has that experience. And this past weekend, there was a young man, uh, that I met and he is now going to participate in the program. And there's another young man, uh, not so young anymore, but he had a dream that one day he'd fly and that dream was fulfilled. And, uh, so there are so many people that have dreams that they feel they can't fulfill. Uh, but I'm just happy to see that out at the Beaumont Municipal Airport, they're seeking out young people all across our city to let them know that they too can dream and have those dreams come true.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Councilman. Councilmember Muton?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Taylor, congratulations on a, uh, successful fly-in weekend. Uh, it appears that it is opening the door to many, many more. Uh, job well done. Um, I would also like to say, um, give condolences. It was, uh, I had a very, uh, busy week, uh, busy Saturday with the loss of my father-in-law, Ed Muton, uh, who was, um, local businessman and caterer here in town who loved, loved, loved doing, uh, what he did, serving people and, um, loved serving, uh, our men in blue and our fire department. I'll never forget one day, uh, police officer stopped him. And when the, uh, officer stopped him, he told us, he said, he told the cop, "You need to give me a ticket." He said he was trying to talk on the phone, hold a cup of coffee and drive. And so, he said, "Well, Mr. Muton, we're gonna go ahead and just give you a warning this time, so we make sure we get us another meal." But, uh, that was just something came to mind, standing up here looking at Cody. But, um, he, uh, lived a wonderful life and, uh, he was very special in my life and, uh, to the community and, uh, to his church and to, uh, Bishop Guillory and to the members of all Mother Mercy Church. Just wanna thank, uh, them for a beautiful service on Saturday and for all of the calls and, uh, the greetings that our entire family received. We just wanna thank everyone and thank the community. Also, um, I'd like to send condolences to, uh, Reverend David Robinson, who worked, uh, for B I S D in the Torrance Department, uh, dynamic, dynamic, uh, pastor. Um, he was also my treasurer the first time I ran, uh, for office. Um, it's just, uh, a one-of-a-kind pastor and the mole is definitely broken. Uh, it's just not another Reverend David Robinson. Uh, he will be missed. And so condolences, uh, to his family and to his congregation. And also to my associate pastor of my church, Paradise Church, um, associate pastor Douglas Cash, who also was funeralized on Saturday. Um, I would just like to send condolences to his family and to wish everyone a Happy Thanksgiving. It is not the usual Thanksgiving that we normally have. Um, we have to really consider COVID-nineteen and take some serious, serious safety precautions. But as always, the food is always there, family and love. So, enjoy your family this holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Muton. And, um, just like to say, um, please give our condolences to your family on your father-in-law, Ed Muton. I did know him. He was a great guy and I think most of us did. And, um, who didn't? Um, so, so sorry for your loss. Um, like to, um, wish our, um, Councilmember Randy, uh, Fellshaw, speedy recovery. I understand he's doing well. Unfortunately, not everyone is. We have a very, very high hospitalization rate with COVID-nineteen right now. So, anybody that you know that is there, just pray for them. Um, I'm so sorry that I could not, I was not able to attend the fly-in. However, I do know how great they are because I went to many when I was a little girl on up to my teenage years because my dad was a pilot and, um, actually started as a crop duster. And I won't tell you that I flew in the hopper before 'cause I think that's against the law. But, um, with that said, um, also had a plane and we, we flew a lot. And so, that was a great memory for me and I'm really sorry that I missed it because I heard it was fantastic. Um, for the holidays, um, you may see that we're starting to decorate around the event center. Um, due to, uh, the pandemic, we're not able to do our festival with food trucks and bands and dancing and all that like we typically do, which I hate because it is one of my favorite things that we do. But, um, just be on the lookout for many activities that will be going on on the event center grounds, especially for the kids, for the children. Um, Emily and, uh, Emily Wheeler, our facilities director, and I met and came up with, uh, quite a few things that will be happening on weekends, at night, on some Saturdays. That'll include, uh, the kids and, uh, the police department, I think, is, um, gonna, um, be involved in the fire department and many other departments. And we will start adding to an arch that we will be erecting near the event center that will have s- snowflakes and snowmen. And, um, and every year, hopefully, um, we will be able to, um, to add to that and you actually drive through. It's very cool. So, I think our kids, uh, and our, our big kids and our little kids will enjoy that. For more information, just follow, uh, discoverbeaumont.com or the Facebook page for the event facilities or Discover Beaumont. And all that information, as we put it up, uh, will, will, um, be on there. In addition to starting the Friday night movies again at the Jefferson, which one of these days we'll have the organ, uh, to go with that, but that'll be starting, I believe, on November thirtieth is the first Friday night movie. And those Friday nights there'll be holiday movies. Of course, there will be all the protocols in place if anyone wants to go for social distancing. Um, and I think that's all I have. And I'd, before the recess for executive session, I'd like to wish everyone a very, very Happy Thanksgiving and, uh, enjoy your families. Thank you so much. We will now recess into executive session. Thank y'all for coming.